Call this meeting of the Clark'sburg School Committee to order. It is 4:03 on February 4th, 2021.
Let you know we're recording the meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone who is present at this time have any comments, questions, any reasons why you're here other than what we're going to talk about on the agenda? We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes that we'll be looking to approve tonight. We have minutes dated January 7th and minutes dated January 21st. Did everyone get a chance to review them? And other questions, comments?
No questions.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Clark'sburg School Committee meetings dated January 7th and January 21st, 2021.
Then is there a second?
I've got to do that.
All in favor?
Yeah.
The financial state. We are going to move to approve the current financial statement for FY21 as it is at this time. Is there a motion to do that? I'll make the motion to approve the current financial statement for FY21. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
It's all right, it's four o'clock, we're not used to this start time. Principal Barnes, like to move into your report? You're all set?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna show you my screen. Okay. All right. You give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen? Thank you. Just a brief agenda today. This is the overview of what I'd like to share. Some more or less staffing, more than PD. And PD for their Fridays, some teaching and learning updates and just some COVID updates. We have some new student teachers here. These are all MCLA student teachers. Sharing their pictures since you won't get to see them in person. We have one in Mrs. Klein's room, one in Mrs. Howe's room in kindergarten, and one in Ms. Parker's third grade class. So it's exciting to see these new fresh faces in our school. They started the week of January 25th and they, we welcomed them with a, some coffee and donuts last week and, and some welcome signs and we're excited to have them on board and, and getting into the swing of things. Just some, some pictures for you of some of our early release Friday work. They love, the teachers love to send me pictures of what they're doing on Friday afternoons to share out. And it's a lot of, it looks like a lot of this. There's a lot of planning and copying and sorting and getting things together for those students who are at home, planning for students that are in school, collaborating with each other, prepping, and trying to make things for small groups that they have to do in different ways. They want to make sure that you know that they are very appreciative and thankful for these half-day Fridays and we are putting them to very good use still. So just a quick, that was just a couple pictures. Teaching and learning updates. We are starting, we have started after-school interventions. This is the second week of doing so. We're doing that in grades one through five. We have 24 students who are staying after school. Some are staying three days a week, some are staying two days a week. Our first grade students are just staying on the afternoon Fridays, the half-day Fridays for a couple hours because their stamina to stay after school. We weren't sure if they could make it all the way to four o'clock. So we have some different, it looks different at different grade levels and classrooms, but some math intervention work, some ELA intervention work. This is a one-on-one situation, but it's typically, I think this was the first week we started, so there was only one who came that one day, but, and it might have been that snowy day and she, her parents really wanted her to stay. But it's typically about three or four, maybe at most five and, that are staying in a classroom and are working in small groups. So there might be two students who are doing something on a computer or at a station and while the teacher's with two students or three and then they're switching. It's all, you know, the teacher who teaches them during the day is running the intervention after school. And they're filling some of those gaps for our students based on our winter benchmark assessments. So that's happening and that runs through the end of March. We're doing an eight-week intervention after school with, with students. What is this? So this is social emotional learning. This is on our Wellness Wednesday. Jamie Hall, our Dean of Students and Kristi McNeese, who works in our Student Support Center, they go to classrooms on Wednesdays and they do, this is guided meditation in fourth grade. It's a 10-minute guided meditation where they're on the floor and, and the, the person who's running it, whether it's Mrs. Hall or Mrs. McNeese, are talking them through a guided meditation. They've done yoga with students on Wednesdays. And the reaction has been wonderful. The fourth graders in this picture absolutely love this activity. They, they couldn't wait until they could do it again next Wednesday. They're not sleeping, they're doing guided meditation. And I think this is really important. Oh, Jen, do you want to do guided meditation too? Is that why you're raising your hand?
I just wanted to say it's a good thing we replaced the carpet in that.
That's, yes, that's right. I, I'm so glad you picked up on that. Yep, that's, that's the carpet there. It would have been not as comfortable to do guided meditation on the tile asbestos floor that we had in there before. So this is much, much improved. So, so this is another great thing that's happening in our school. And then this is, this was a coordinated snowball fight. I just wanted to share this and throw this in for fun. Fifth grade wrote a persuasive letter to me that they wanted to have a snowball fight, even though it's in the handbook that they can't have snowball fights. They're not allowed to throw snow, but they, they had such good arguments for why they wanted to have a snowball fight that I relented and I said, as long as I could, I could mediate the, the snowball fight and I could lay out the ground rules and that, you know, I, I'd make sure nobody got really hurt. So I, I was out there, that's me in the middle of the snowball fight for the fifth grade. It was very contained, we did it just for 10 minutes and and that was that. But that's some of the fun that we have here at Clark'sburg School too. So just wanted to share that picture with you. And then the last thing that, so that's all under social emotional, by the way, on my snowball fights and guided meditation. And then the last thing I wanted to share was just some of the trends with, with what's happening with COVID in our school. To give you a snapshot, this is some of the data that I share with staff each week, but I think it's important also to be transparent with, with our community. Just in the last three weeks, if you look at the top box on my screen, the week of January 11th, we had eight staff members out quarantining and that could have been an exposure to COVID, it could have been symptoms that they were having and they were awaiting a test. It could have, any of those, those reasons. We had eight staff members out that week. We had, we have zero out for travel every week that you see because no one's traveling. And then I, I also share how many people are testing positive actually, and that week it was zero. That was the week when we had our one positive case that hit us in our junior high. So we quarantined 22 students that week that were, that were in that class, including siblings. And I think I was talking to you about that, the last school committee meeting that we were going to move towards quarantining siblings as well. That week we had five students out quarantining for travel that occurred during the holiday break. And we had those three students who were testing positive, the one that was in the school and then there were two that occurred over the break that were never in the school. And then as you can see, I'm showing you this data to show you how it's decreasing in numbers each week, right? So then we had five staff out quarantining the, the following week. We had, the 22 were still, you know, they came back the week of the 18th, but it was, you know, I still counted them as, as being out that week. And then you look at the week of the 25th, we've got no staff out quarantining. We've got one student, I think, that was quarantining for a day or two around a possible exposure, but otherwise we were, we're down to zero. And so we're trending in the right direction. I think the really positive thing that came out of our one exposure in the school was that no one who was considered a close contact to that case tested positive. Everyone was negative, staff, students, anyone who was anywhere near who had a test came up negative, which means that our masks are working, our social distancing is working, our hygiene is working, the ventilation is working, we already knew that. So this is really a positive to, to put out there to say that the things that we have put in place and planned for, for so long do work and we are definitely trending in the right direction after the bump over the holiday. My hope is that our families continue to communicate with us around travel, they continue to communicate with us around possible exposures because we know we have another break coming up in February. We know we have a Super Bowl weekend this weekend where people may gather and kind of feel like, oh, maybe we're, we're through it now because the numbers are going down. We're still in it and we still need everyone to be vigilant in terms of what they do outside of our school because we know that we're not transmitting it inside the school. So it's everything that's happening outside and this community has done a wonderful job in, in helping us to, to keep, keep the doors open. We're on day 86 of being open in person. I know that because I observed a kindergarten lesson today and they were adding their sticks and 10 bundles of 10 to the calendar. So they counted up, they told me, I trust the kindergartners because they know how to count their 10s and 1s. It is day 86. So that's all I really have. I wanted to keep it short for our four o'clock meeting tonight because I know we have a long evening ahead of us, but I am open for any questions or comments that you have about what I presented.
Those data look amazing. It just really speaks volumes to the work that the administration, the educators and the students have done to keep our doors open and keep kids in school as much as possible. So I applaud everybody. It is absolutely amazing and very grateful for all of you and your ability to make this happen.
Thank you.
I completely agree. I just feel, you know, every meeting we have, I feel luckier and luckier to have my kids where they are and be under the care of all of you and Clark'sburg Elementary. Great job, day 86 and still counting, so.
Oh, those kindergartners are gonna keep counting.
Yeah.
In person, in person.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing all those numbers. That is very impressive to see and again, I can't say anymore than what Eric and Laura have said. You guys are doing an amazing job and I'm very, very grateful. So thank you.
And you know, just another quick note, you know, it's, it is important. Thank you for showing us what the teachers are all doing and the staff is all doing on the Fridays. I think it's great to see how much they get accomplished and I'm glad that we're able to give them that time. So thank you for that and you can pass that along to any of them you see in the hall.
Well.
All right, Superintendent's report. John, if you have anything other than new business?
Yeah, I mean, I think most of my report will be the new business topics, but just a couple of quick comments. Nice to hear, day 86 for the students means they're on the second half of their school year, given that we have 170 days for the kids this year. And, you know, I think about, just to echo some of the comments already made, it's really a testament to the teamwork from the, from the school committee to the admins, teachers, staff and our students and our families. Everybody's made a lot of sacrifices this year to make sure that our school can be open in person. You know, I think the, the comments about this weekend, Super Bowl Sunday and the, the break coming up are, are very important. We've, I think our schools and in this case, Clark'sburg have all done a great job of following the safety guidelines to, to make this work so that our kids can be in person. I know I'll be sitting on my couch watching by myself as I've been doing for the last 18, whatever weeks it's been of the football season and that's, you know, definitely not as much fun as it, it used to be, but it's, that's what it is. So it's important that we all stay safe and I'm just really proud of everybody for doing that to benefit our students. A couple of quick things, the vaccinations, we know they're starting to roll out phase two with the citizens that are 75 and older with certain health situations. I know it's a, you know, it certainly is off to a, well, it's off to a decent start. I know it's not easy to get appointments, I'm trying to get my aunt and my mother appointments and they're, they fill up pretty quickly. So it's, you know, teachers are in, in phase two. Our efforts to have the in-person staff be prioritized when that happens. You know, the commissioner said that he brought that to Secretary Sutter's, but that just logistically it wouldn't work and I understand that, that makes sense. I just appreciate the fact that he listened to us and, and did advocate for that and also that, you know, at least he heard that out of the 20 districts that are in person, four of them are named MBSU. I mean, three of them are out of the 20 and Clark'sburg is like 28. We're right there. And I know Tara, we've been talking about plans to try and bring, as the next trimester comes up and the weather gets a little nicer, trying to make sure that we can get all of our six, seven, eighth years at school for a full day. So we're not resting on our laurels here, we're trying to figure out a way to plan and work together to make sure that the entire school can be back in person for a full day prior to the end of the school year. So that's, that's an important goal for us to keep working towards and we appreciate everybody's cooperation and making that happen so far, the model we have so far and the model that we're striving to come up with before, I would say by early spring, I guess basically would be the goal on that. I would say anything else, I just, if we wanted to just hop into the new business, Laura, is that okay? We just hop into the school reopening plan? I mean, that's really, there hasn't been a lot of updates from the, the governor, commissioner. You know, the commissioner was talking about that pool testing plan most recently. Tara did sit in on a webinar a few weeks ago. I was participating with the Berkshire County Super Tennis Roundtable. There was some discussion about how we could work together on that, but reality is from my standpoint for our school that the pool testing is not, and I don't think it's in our best interest to do that. And Tara and I talked about it and we both agreed on that. And the reason why is that if you do these pool tests, you have to do them every week. For the first six weeks, the state is working with the schools to pick up the price tag on that, but after that it falls on the schools to pay for. There was also discussion when the Berkshire County group got together about hiring somebody to administer it because it was going to be a lot of extra work. And then there was going to be the cost for making sure that the labs are in the other part of the state, so you have to transport your samples there. So there was a plan for that and I think the Berkshire County group is really working hard to make it happen in the larger schools, try to get them, you know, appease their unions and get back to being in person, which we hope they can do for their students. But just, I think our plan of telling people that, you know what, you, if you're not feeling well, stay home. Because basically if the pool test comes back and you have a pool of 10 to 25 individuals, if there's a positive within that pool, then you have to also, by the way, purchase the Binax rapid response test, which has to be administered next in the school. And then after that comes back positive, you identify who maybe the positive person is, they still have to go to the doctor and get the, the official test with a doctor. So to me, it's adding a couple of layers and steps into the process where we're just kind of to the chase and saying, if you don't feel good, go see your doctor, please. And they're the experts, they're the ones that should conduct the, conduct the test. And I think everybody at our school is taking on a lot of responsibilities, including our nurse, who is a one-person operation would, you know, help from wherever it can happen, but I just don't, I get it for the larger schools, especially the ones that are trying to get back in person, it makes sense. Our model's not broke, so I'm not trying, I don't think we need to adjust it right now. And I think our plan going forward is our, our best plan to continue being open and to, to stick with that plan, the 14-day quarantine. I know that's something we're getting the word out now that if, you know, if you're a family that feels the need to go away in February vacation, that's your choice, but when you come back, you gotta quarantine for 14 days and do remote learning. So, and that's worked for us because as Tara mentioned in her data, we've had one positive case that's actually been in the school. There were a couple of other positive cases that are, you know, Clark'sburg community, learning community, but they never stepped foot in the school after winter break because of those precautions that are in place. That to me helped us achieve the good results we have now that we barely have anybody out on quarantine. So, so I just appreciate everybody's sacrifices and working together and I just wanted to highlight the pool testing process because just, I just wanted to show you that we are looking at all options to try to make sure that we keep our school safe. We are still getting the word out about making sure we're continuing to be safe about big events and other things that are going on, vacations. And we all know that, believe me, I would love to go up and visit my stepson up at Maine right now, his new home that he and his wife just built, but we'll go when they say we can go. We're not going to go until then, but you know, if families do decide they need to go someplace and they just quarantine, follow our rules and they come back. And the teachers have done a great job of staying connected with those students, whether they've chosen to do that full-time this year for whatever reason, or if they have to quarantine, the whole staff has worked really hard to do the same, to keep those kids engaged and connected with their learning. So I think that's what we end up.
Yep.
Just other than the aspect, I just wanted to let everyone know that the Clark'sburg School has received a new grant in the amount of $10,200. It's from the Coronavirus Prevention Fund and it's going to help us continue our efforts throughout the rest of the year and opening into the fall. And I'm not sure if I had mentioned this before, but we also received part two of the ESSR funds, which is $85,000 over two years. Just wanted to let you know.
And yeah, definitely appreciate the work that Jen and staff and Tara are doing towards, you know, earning these additional grants and the, as Jen mentioned, the ESSR II grant that can be used over the next two years. We've already had discussions with our leadership team about, you know, where can that be used most effectively over the next two school years? There is a specific requirement for 10,000 of that total to go towards social emotional and I think, you know, we're going to look towards using more than 10,000 of that towards social emotional. We have discussions about adding that second school adjustment counselor for our four schools that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, among other things that we know we need to do to support our students and staff to make sure that everybody's getting the some emotional support they need. You know, mental health is a big part of this pandemic. It's not always talked about as much as the physical toll taken by the virus, but we know that our students and families and staff all need extra support. We're going to try our best to provide that and we can talk about that more during our budget discussion later, but we are looking at those options to try to use that grant money effectively and put it to, to the most pressing needs in our school. Tara, you have anything on the school reopening to add?
No, I, I would mention that we are working on a phased-in plan. I think I alluded to it the last meeting, but I'm not sure. To, to bring the junior high students back in full day, we do have one teacher who's planning to move from remote to in-person teaching. We've been very sensitive about making sure we're doing that one, when that person's ready to come back and, and is feeling, you know, is meeting all the requirements to be able to do that for themselves. When that happens, we're going to do a phased-in reopening of the junior high to full-time where we bring some of our student body and the junior high back full-time so we can get this teacher back into the rotation of things. So some of our high needs kids who, who do stay, some afternoons anyway, would be staying every day then. And we hope to do that after the, the February break that week where we have students who we know in each grade level would benefit from being here full day because of their needs. And that would help us reorganize our technology, reorganize our room spaces, reorganize our schedule to be able to, to figure out how to phase in the rest of our junior high students with the hope of a trimester three start date. We, we wanted to be sensitive to numbers that may change at trimester three also with some of our opt-out students who may want to opt back in and then what that looks like in terms of where, you know, how we space people out. So trimester three is a good time to, to, to make that full phase in happen. We're hoping that there'll be nicer weather by that point. Looking to the PTG for support to look for a tent that won't blow away. We had a, we had a great loner tent in the fall that, you know, was a generous donation, but we, we're not that lucky for the spring, so we have to look into some investing of, outside, you know, sprucing up our outside space to be able to do outside learning in the spring. So the hope is that the closer we get to some of that nicer weather, we can get some of our junior high students outside if we have larger numbers who opt back in. We're hoping that with the vaccinations rolling out, that some of our staff that's remote, you know, there's the potential that, you know, we, we might, we might be better staffed. We might be all, you know, seeing these numbers stay at zero in terms of quarantining. You know, we're always stretched when we have staff that are quarantining that are out. And so if we get the vaccination and, and people are less exposed, you know, the better chance we have of being able to really support the students that are in person when they're here, if we have a full staff. So all of those things together. And with the February break, we are waiting a little while till after the February break and potential travel from that. All of those things we, we really thought carefully about to be able to make sure that we can sustain a full in-person model for junior high. So we want to take it slow, just like we did in the beginning of the school year, take some baby steps towards that goal. But like the superintendent said, you know, we're not mailing it in just because we've done what we've done to this point so far this year. Our goal has always been to try to get as many students in person full-time as we possibly can and we're, we're still working towards that goal and we're going to make that happen. So. Laura, you have your hand up? I feel like I shouldn't call on you, you should, you're the caller, but I see your hand up. If I could just unmute myself, maybe I could actually, that's okay, we're all in this together, so I thought I'd raise my hand. Just wondering, I had some ideas on who we might check with for tents. Who should I, should I go to the PTG or talk to you at a later time about that or?
Yeah, we've talked about that, that Lauren, I'm sorry Tara, we talked about that, that, you know, the other MBSU districts have gotten support from their PTG earlier in the school year to purchase tents. And one of the things that Tara and I talked about was in an effort to bring back the six, seventh, eighth grade students full-time is that, you know, by looking towards the early spring, you know, could we set up some more permanent outdoor learning spaces? And, you know, we relied in the spring on, or in the fall, I should say, I'm sorry, on some nice people that donated tents for the most part, but it'd be, I think it'd be in our best interest to purchase some more sturdy type of long-term tents. We know we're always going to have tough weather in our communities, so, you know, can we get a more long-term option? Because one thing I'd say about that too is in our Berkshire County Superintendent Roundtable meeting last Friday, Dr. Doyle from BMC spoke and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, the vaccine process and, you know, the, the new variants with this virus and different things going on. And the reality is when we come back in August, you know, for our new school year, we're not going to come back to the way things were. It's going to be most likely very similar to the way it's going to be in the spring. There's still going to be people wearing masks, distancing maybe, maybe six feet, maybe, I think we can go in with three feet. I think that's improving, that's still safe. I mean, there's going to be some things in place that are going to be the ongoing safety guidance we have now. So I think it'd be wise, we've done, I think, a really good job in our schools, doing some outdoor learning. So if we can devise some and set up some outdoor learning spaces that are covered, we can have those outdoor learning spaces, whether it's a nice sunny day or it's a rainy day. So, and I think that's going to be important that we have, you know, one thing we've really learned about is ventilation and being in that, whether it's fresh air in the classroom, fresh air outside, that's important to keeping our school safe. Our schools have been safe because we follow all those guidelines that schools have been proven that to be a place where the virus is spread. As we saw with the one case we had in school, nobody else got it because everybody else was following the rules and so was the person that tested positive. So it's important for us to, to work together and if we get some support from the PTG for tents, that would be very much appreciated. Especially since we're not going to have our field trips we've had and things like that into the year. So a lot of times classes are looking for, what can they do for a gift? Well, we'd like to ask them to help, help us with a Well, we'd like to ask them to help, help us with a tent. Sorry, go ahead Tara.
No, yeah, and I'll just put a plug in that we have a chicken parm dinner fundraiser this Friday night that the PTG has put together, and I know they're doing, they're planning a basket raffle from the beginning of March. So they are, they're working on ways to virtually do fundraisers still, and with the hopes of supporting whatever new kinds of learning that we are, we find ourselves in, which include outdoor spaces. So I'm hopeful that PTG will be able to help us out with that to bring everyone back.
Just my last thing I'll say about the reopenings, I should have had during my superintendent's report, but we did kick off our Northern Berkshire United Way drive two weeks ago. Tomorrow it closes in our school, so, you know, just another example of our teachers and staff that, you know, give to these organizations that are supported by the Northern Berkshire United Way, or agencies outside of school that do help to support our families in a variety of ways also. So appreciate the staff all pitching in from Savoy and Clark'sburg in Florida. And, you know, if anybody needs a form, we have some more, we're going to turn them in early next week. So thanks to the staff for doing that and for pitching in, because these agencies are really important to our families outside of school to provide some supports that are very much needed. What do we got on that? I think Laura.
Should we revisit our favorite topic, snow days and remote learning? Is that not our favorite?
Yeah, it's a cool topic. All right.
It's still on here. I mean, I think so where we're at from the decision we made at the last meeting, which was another two snow days, we have one remaining still, correct? So I don't know that we want to look beyond that at this point, or if we do want to talk about putting any more in place, or looking to remote days for any other potential snow days that come up.
So that I, I, so I was under the impression from the last vote that we were doing two more snow days, and then after that it was half-day remote learning days? Is that, is that right?
I think so, yeah.
So that's what I communicated to staff, so they were preparing for one more snow day, and then they were collaborating on Wednesday about what a half-day remote day would look like, how they would start to plan that. So they're gearing up for a remote, remote planning in their mind for the snow day after the next snow day.
Okay.
For a half-day. So for example, junior high came up with a schedule where they would meet with students only in the morning online, and they would shorten their classes to half-hour blocks so that they would see each class in the morning, and then they would not be synchronous after 11:30. They may have some assignments that they might have to finish up if they didn't complete them in class in the afternoon, but otherwise they're planning for a half-day of remote learning on a snow day, which I thought was where we were going.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think the minutes captured that, it just doesn't have that right here, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think the key point is it'd be a half-day of synchronous instruction and learning, and it'd be some other assignments that would be done asynchronously or on, you know, as soon as we're doing them on their own, like almost like a homework assignment. So it'd be similar to that. But I also think that if you're going to go forward with that plan, that we should do a formal vote.
Cindy and Erica, do you have any further discussion for that?
No, I don't think so. It sounds like a reasonable plan.
The feedback I'll give you too is that Savoy has done two remote learning days for the last two, well, they had a snow day last week when Clark'sburg did not, so. But, you know, that's the, sometimes a little bit of the benefit that they certainly got more snow than we got on that day, where Clark'sburg had school and they did not. But it's important that there's some advance notice, because you need to have the day before, or it's announced in school, or the teachers have time to provide the students with the technology they need and anything else that would be required. And I know the first day that they did it, there was almost 100% participation in a town that has internet issues. So they really, it was good participation by the kids, and, you know, they had two good days of learning on those two remote learning days instead of having snow days. And that's, you know, that's the benefit of continuing the learning, we're just doing it at home for a day, and then everybody came, the requirement was their work had to be brought back in the next day. And if families chose not to participate, then they were just marked absent for that day. So that's the, that seems to be working pretty well up there.
Makes sense to me. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to have one more snow day, and then following that, we would have half-days of synchronous learning and the other half asynchronous learning for the remainder of the school year.
I'll second that.
Hopefully we don't have snow in June.
I was just going to say, hopefully not to extend like into April. We don't want snow. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next favorite topic, pre-K program, which we, however much you want to say now, John.
Yeah. This is a preview for this meeting at 6 o'clock. There is going to be a joint meeting of the Clark'sburg School Committee and Select Board at 6 tonight. It'll be a separate meeting, a separate sign-in. We had great turnout at our meeting on the 21st, great support by families and teachers, and it was a good discussion about the need for a pre-K program. Tara, since we're officially in the meeting, do you want to read those numbers off of potential pre-kindergarten students coming up?
Yeah, I want to thank Jordan Rennell, who I see in this meeting, for helping to organize a survey. She's, she's a go-getter there, getting this organized. And I sent this out to, to our families, asking them to fill out the survey if they had any children under five, and to share it with others that they might know of who would be in the same situation. So this survey's only been live for about, I don't, I mean, maybe five hours, and we have 23 respondents in five hours. We have seven children who will be turning five by September of this year, which would be our kindergarten class. We have six who would be turning four by September. We have 11 who would be turning three by September. We have three who would be turning two, and five who would be turning one. And I think we decided to ask those questions about who's turning one and who's turning two, just to get a forecast of what's down the road. And you can see, there's still plenty of, plenty of young ones that are in the pike. So, and honestly, we put it, again, that that survey's only been out for five hours is, if we have that many people responding. And usually when we have kindergarten registration open, we have it open for months, and we still find people in the summer who, who need to register for kindergarten, so that we already, you know, having a number like seven for kindergarten, I know that number will go up for sure. So there may be more four, three, two, and one-year-olds that we don't know about clearly. This is just scratching of the surface. So that's what we have.
Tara, if you could hang on to those kindergarten names, so when I do my child find, I can do a direct hit to those seven.
Yeah, well, we have, we didn't, it's an anonymous survey, but we have email addresses, so I can, I can send you those.
I gave you my email, so it's not that anonymous. Go ahead, John.
Oh, sorry. I will say there's been some, you know, communication between, you know, we met, myself, Tara, Jen, and Laura met to discuss just planning for upcoming meeting. We had some communication with the town administrator and the select board about the feedback that we received at the last meeting with the families. You know, there was a lot of focus on, you know, was, would the space in the library be available for a classroom? Just as a preview of the meeting, I know the town administrator is going to share that she consulted with legal counsel, and that legal counsel basically said that the library has, I don't know exactly the terminology, but basically they, they are in charge of their space. So if the select board wanted to request that space, they could, they'd have to have the library's cooperation for that, and they would have to replace the space if they were to give up any of their space in the library as it currently stands. So I know a lot of families at the last one were kind of like, oh, you should go and take that space. Well, it's not that easy. So and we want to work together. I mean, like I mentioned, I had a good conversation with the chair of the trustees, Deb Buwa, back in early January, just about the program. She was very much, as a town resident, saying we need a pre-K program. There, you know, there wasn't an offer of using the library space, there was discussion about that exact clause that the town administrator had. And I think, you know, it's going to be maybe an outcome is, can we have a discussion about, you know, is there space that they can let us allow the school to use for a classroom? And can the town replace that space if they do agree to that? I don't know, it's all, this is all preliminary, this is just speculation. So I think it's a key thing for us to explore though, can we all work together on this? Can we get our, you know, our town leaders, our town, I guess I would say seniors, our town library leaders, can everybody agree to work together? Because as Tara just read off, we have potential for 17 children that live in Clark'sburg next year, 11 three-year-olds and six four-year-olds who could be choosing to enroll in a pre-K program, and really, we hope would enroll in a pre-K program in our town. So, I don't know, analogy I always use, I grew up in a big Italian-Irish, you know, mixed family, that Lebanese family that always wanted to make the next generation have a better life. It made a lot of sacrifices that had to happen. So we're asking for the, from the town, for a space to help us to have an extra classroom so we can have a pre-K program. I think it falls on all of us. You know, this group that I know is working hard towards that, the select board, the library, the seniors, the parents, the teachers, the, everybody to make whatever sacrifices that takes to make it happen. You know, I think one thing that the town of Clark'sburg needs to start doing, I think now, is to look towards their future and decide what, you know, what is their future? And your future is your children. So we need to provide them with the best education we can, and I think we do that from grades K through eight. But by not having a pre-kindergarten program, we're not doing all we can. So we need to make sure that, you know, I know, I know this group is in favor of that, and I'm preaching to the choir, but we certainly do need to make sure that our, we emphasize that this is not a luxury, this is a necessity, to have a pre-kindergarten program to benefit our children. I can, I will cite something that I know from about, I don't know, five or six years ago, when I was a principal at Brayton. I know there was, there was a staff member that left there to come to work in Clark'sburg, and I know exactly what the numbers are at that time were for children that were involved with special education programs. And they're significantly higher now, and I think a part of that is because we don't have a pre-K program. And Stephanie can speak to that as well, that early childhood supports are very important, they've always been very important, or even more important now, for a lot of different reasons, including the fact that we can provide those universal supports in a variety of areas to children that are in our school at three and four years old. We can't provide them now because we don't have a pre-K program. We're meeting the needs of the IEP students, but that leaves a lot of other students on their own. So I think we have to leave all options open, we have to figure out what's the best option to make this happen, and we have to do, have some honest discussions about how we can do that. And, you know, that involves all parties in our town, because we have to really think about what the future is of our education in Clark'sburg. Terry, have your hand up? Okay. All right, I'll stop talking now and see what anyone else wants to say. Jen, go ahead.
And this is going to kind of sound strange coming from me, because you all, or I work for all of you, but we really need to have a united front, and you really need to be strong with the select board, because they're sick of hearing from me and John and Tara. They really need it as a governing agency to hear it from you that this is what we want, and we have to find a way to get it done. That's just my two cents.
I have my hand up now. Jen and John inspired me, I guess. I would also, I mean, most of us on the screen were around for that failed vote in, I try to erase the year from my mind, but I think it was 2017, 18. Part of that vote was about a pre-K. It was about extra space for special ed, it was about a pre-K, and it was about updating all of our antiquated systems in this building, from plumbing to electric to everything. That promise never came through. The town said to us, no. They said, no, you can't have this extra space, and you can't have updated, you know, things in your building. But, I mean, I think we made it clear at that point that the space was needed for special education clearly, the space was needed for pre-K clearly. And I think it needs to sort of go back to the town to say, this is still unanswered. You voted no to the building, and we can understand that if that at the time was not financially achievable, but that, but we still need that question answered. That, that question of pre-K and extra space for special ed has not gone away. It's still there, it's very present, and it's real. So the town, I think, really has to think about looking at its resources that it owns and has in this town. And when I say resources, it's, it's really about master planning and looking at, you know, your residents, looking at your spaces, beyond just thinking about this room. I mean, well, if not that, then what is it? I mean, but essentially, everything's got to be put on the table, and the town has to be managed in a way that it meets all of the needs of all of its residents. So again, I know we're preaching to the choir here, but I just have to throw in that failed vote, because had we gotten that through, we would have a pre-K, we would have extra space for special ed. We don't have it, it's unanswered. So where's the answer? From the town? I'll say it at 6 o'clock, too.
But correct me if I'm wrong, from what John just said on the interpretation from the legal opinion that we got this weekend, I know I've heard some other interpretations, which I liked better, sorry. But we, we need to not only get through to the town and have their cooperation, but we need to have the library trustees be willing to allow us the space now. It's not just up to the town, correct?
Yeah, so if I said that wrong, that's what I was meaning to say. That's what both the town administrator and one select board member told me this afternoon. It has to be agreed to by the town and the library leadership that there could be space made available in the library for another classroom. If that is agreed to, then the town would have to, my understanding of that legal opinion would have to provide some other type of space that would make up for the space that would be lost from the library space to the school, to make that whole, I guess. I don't know, that's going to be up to, you know, town leaders to talk about. I'm kind of disappointed that nobody's talked about that with, I feel, I feel like we put out a olive branch to the library in January, and I had a very good talk with Deb, and I've known Deb for many years, and I appreciate her taking the time to talk with me about just the pre-K program and her thoughts as a Clark'sburg resident for many years, and from a family that has been in Clark'sburg for many years, and I appreciate her giving, sharing her thoughts. But, yeah, this is, like I said, I guess in my talk earlier, this is time for the town to work together and stop being divided and figure out what's best going forward. There's not a time to be arguing about spaces, the time to figure out which space is available, how can it be used, and how can it benefit our children? John, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to throw out there that I'm still uncertain as to what question was posed to council. If the question was termed, who's responsible for running the library, as opposed to who has control over the property? Because from this opinion, I, I just see- see a little bit of gray as far as being a custodian of books and material versus um, being in charge of the property. So that's just my two cents.
Is that Mary's hand up or is it Ron? I can't tell. I think it's
Mary.
Okay, sorry.
Oops. I think I just muted myself. Um, I do have a question because the little part that was added on the end about replacing the space. Is that something they're talking about? The town is responsible for replacing that space or the school would be responsible for replacing that space?
The town. It's all on the town.
So if it, so basically, the town is gonna have to decide or somehow figure out how to get more money to replace that space if there's no other space they're willing to give to replace that. And if that in fact is a, is an issue, then why wouldn't the town just build an addition to the school for our pre-K instead of replacing the library that's already currently there?
I like the way you think.
Um, yeah, that's a big question. That's a good question, Mary. I don't know.
And it's not gonna be very hard to do when they're talking about lowering our taxes by two dollars per thousand, which is silly notion in my opinion. Not that I wouldn't love to pay less taxes as a homeowner, but um, there's so many things that this town needs. Um, and and they're discussing lowering our taxes by two dollars a thousand. So I mean, these are just things that I think if no one brings up tonight at the six o'clock meeting, somebody should. I don't know. I don't know.
I think these are all good points of discussion, Mary, your point and Jen's point. And these are hopefully things that we can bring up and ask of the, I believe, the whole select board and the town administrator should be there. So these are good questions, I would say, to ask uh that we should be asking them.
Okay, thank you.
What are you doing at six, Mary? You're a taxpayer.
I have a quick question, just a quick one. Um, has the town started the process of thinking about what they could offer the library? Because I know sometimes if you lay like concrete options out on the table as a possibility, it tends to be more appealing than we'll find you space um, to replace what the pre-K does. So I'm just curious if that dialogue has happened yet or if it's kind of put in the cart before the horse a little bit.
I mean, I made that suggestion earlier, Eric, to uh both uh Rebecca and the select board member I talked to about, you know, could uh you know, at one point, you know, truthfully, Jen and I toured the the community center with uh with Rebecca about the pre-K. It doesn't work for pre-K because you can't make it a secure space. But uh, you know, as Jen is always in, I know her comment refers to, could that could they provide equitable space at the community center to put some books and things in there that uh you know, we have two spaces that are right down the street from each other that are primarily used by seniors. Um, senior center and the library. So um, or as a large percent. So why couldn't that uh be the space they offer? So I mean, that's why I said, maybe there's a, there's a conversation there that can take place that uh other spaces offered and
Yeah, can I, can we clarify, we're only talking about the room off of the school. The room, correct. What is it the library uses that space for at this time and what would we be replacing? Or what would the town be replacing? Because I don't believe there are books stored in there, are there? Oh, there are?
Yeah, there's four, I think it's three or four stacks of books. So maybe three hundred books. Um, the table, two little kids' table and chairs. And then the corner has a rug that you're not allowed to step on. And um, some activities for children. So half the room is designated for children anyways.
Correct. So it would be a matter of the three hundred books that are stacked.
Yeah, and that's just a quick
Well, no, but I I guess my point is, is we're not talking about taking over the actual library or moving into their actual existing space as a library. This is a room on the side of the library. And so to me, I guess to Mary's point, like that seems a little more viable to replace for the library and for their needs in a place like the senior center or someplace else if need be for preschool to exist. Again, like I said, we're not removing all of the library shelves and, you know, looking to re-start a library, someone else, a library could still exist. They just need additional space.
Right. Jordan?
Hi. So I guess I'm confused with why why the library would want to, I don't think that those books are used all that much, the books that are set aside in that space. I think those are the ones that are kind of like old and outdated and we don't look at them. That's why they're there. But if their argument is gonna be they don't want to split their library into two spaces, we should just take the Tara's gonna laugh, so she just turned her camera off at me. She why wouldn't they move the whole library to the whole senior center and have all of their space in one location, have a private driveway with a private parking area that are, those are their complaints about us. That we take up all the parking spaces, that our driveway is constantly full with cars and staff and parents. And I guess, yes, we need a a pre-K space and that space could do it. But if they don't want to split their, their book into two different spaces, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we ask them to move the whole library? Why wouldn't they want to move to that building? What's wrong with that building that they don't like?
This is a perfect uh question for our six o'clock meeting.
Right. I don't, I don't want to, I mean, I feel like I'm getting hot, but I don't understand if that place is equitable for them with size and security and space, parking and all of the above. It's a relatively new building. And the school needs space for not only pre-K, but like Tara said, for special ed, for technology, for social emotional learning, like my child included, but dozens of children in the building are seeking out um therapy for social emotional well-being beyond, above and beyond the school. Like we we're into a time that we just need more. So, but I'll raise my hand at six. But I don't know why we're asking for one six hundred square foot space when we really need the whole thing. And why would the library agree to move partial of their book collection?
I know I had a um brief conversation with a select board member this week as well who understands um and sees how it could work using that small space and how it wouldn't interrupt the everyday workings of the library as it is now. And like Jen said, there's, I think there's four or so shelving units there that maybe even could have space within the existing walls of the library. We're not gonna use their little kitchenette area or their bathroom. It would just be a wall. And she used that space, wouldn't disrupt anything. So maybe that's the easiest way to start, the simplest conversation to have with them to get this program into the school and address some of the other needs as well for social emotional. I am a hundred percent on board if we can at any time try and get the entire library space because we absolutely can use it. I don't think anyone's arguing that we can't. I just don't know. I mean, there's a, there's a whole list of other things that they need the senior center for. From what we're told, they have activities and stuff that are being planned and um potential of maybe uh, town offices moving there. I don't know. We've been hearing a lot of different things. So it's just a bigger conversation. And once the towns and at the table, you're gonna hear some of these things, I think. So it's just a bigger conversation.
I cut out a little bit when Mary was talking, but from what I understood of the building of the new school is that we couldn't increase the footprint of our building. So there, it, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no choice to add on to our building to make us more space. Was that, is that true that we can't add to the footprint of the school because of how big our well and and all of that? No, okay.
Um, about how much people had. I mean, when we were in that building process, there there's um it's tricky, um, because we could only add a small amount of square footage onto the primary wing and most of it had to go the junior high end because of where the well is. The well sits right outside my off, my office window and you have a certain diameter that you cannot put more concrete on, right? And so that was a big part of the decision about where you could add on. Yes. But yeah, I mean, I think it's, yeah, I think you could add something. It's just a matter of where.
I like the other option better where the answer was just no. So that was the only space that we could have was what was already existing.
I mean, I, yeah, let me see if I have time to dig out maps from before, but um yeah, I think that um, I think it depends.
Just so everybody knows, the other piece of this too is that we've been talking about the, you know, the existing space that we have. Um I think one of the things we have to be really careful of going forward is our um acceptance of school choice um beyond a certain point. Like, for example, we have this kindergarten class that has nineteen residents in the class. Um, my, I would say that my plan would be to not accept any school choice in that grade level um, for the whole time that class is in our school. Because what will happen is if you take, say you take three and go, okay, twenty-two is an okay number. They know it'll happen. You'll have a couple of families that move in and where will they all be right in that class? So I think we have to really be careful about what we want to set for our um limits for a class in terms of size, we accept school choice going forward because we have to do everything that we can to avoid having bubble classes going forward where there's class in a grade level because we don't have space. I'm not, we have a couple. I think we have one that's uh was it, is it third grade now, Tara? Is that the, the one that, that, that'd be the last one as far as I'm concerned. If we can, we have to do all our all we can to make sure that, I know we got a recommendation on PCG a couple of years ago that twenty-two is the average and we should have twenty-two kids in a class. And I get it. They're coming from a Boston perspective and it's a different angle where that uh choice is not a factor, but we really need to make sure that we are um prioritizing, and we always do, a number of students that are in uh um, uh, you know, their residents in our classes. And I know that there's circumstances that cause the other classes are bubbles that are beyond anybody's control. But I think just going forward with the really, very cautious about the numbers that we put in a classroom um, to avoid a situation where, like this year, we have eighth grade starting to be in a big class and we had several families move in where we're where they'll go eighth grade. So I think we got twenty-four, twenty-five kids in eighth grade now. So it's uh, it's just something that I think we have to be really um cautious about. And we know one thing I'll say more before I get up the floor is that we have to use all of our space effectively, but we also have some spaces we used in the past that we can't use anymore because of ventilation. A perfect example would be the room that Jordan and used to use for speech is now the copier room. I need to say a copy room because that's all it really can be used for. It can't be a classroom. It's not ventilated appropriately for a long-term use. So we've really learned a lot about our building over the last year. We gotta take that into consideration before we um approve any more new school choices.
Yeah, I just, I I I agree. I think that we have to look at those numbers very carefully. I I know that the the splits for those classes came up because there were a lot of really vocal parents who came to school committee meetings and um, you know, there was a, you, some of you as parents might remember because you have, yep, Cindy Brule remembers. There was a lot of uh, you were involved because your child uh is in one of those classes. Um, there was a lot of parental pressure to create that split in that grade as well as our third grade um, class. And so um, it's, it is tough and it's a balancing act. And I think um, when you get to nineteen and twenty in a kindergarten and, you know, you know, you have some kids that may have lots of needs coming into plus, and this is how the discussion went, I think. And then there was you know, and then some school choice families who had siblings and then it becomes this whole thing like well, why not split the class, why not have another, why not open another class kind of thing? So it's tough. It's really tough when you're it's tough when you're constrained by the space and you want to put students' needs first. I mean, I guess the thing is we should, it's hard when you have a building where you really can't turn around without like bumping into yourself. Like when you have no, no space to work with in case that you have to have a bubble class. Like when I first started here, we had what we called the X room, which was the extra room. It was the X room. Well, it really wasn't an X room. It was where we had music, Spanish art. All, they all shared that one X room, right? So, so and and there was a bubble class with the X room. So you had the ability to flex into that X room if you really needed to. We don't even have that. We don't have a turnaround space. We have nowhere to to go. Um, and and like John said, there are spaces that we know we can't use anymore with the ventilation things, you know, you learn more, you do better. We, we've learned a lot this past year. Um, and there are spaces that I'm not comfortable with people being in for even a short amount of time. So um, it it's, it's really, we're really, again, we knew it when the when the plans went out for the vote for the school. We know it now. The problem has not gone away.
I didn't see whose hand was up first. I apologize. I see Jordan and Mary both um with hands up. Cause yours not up. Mary? Maybe neither are.
All right, mine's not up either.
Okay, that's okay. Um, if nobody else has anything to say at this time, we do need to um continue on in the agenda just because we do have a six o'clock start for our next meeting. Um, Jen, did you have any updates on the building repairs and renovations before we go into executive session?
No, we've got good air and hot water.
I like it. All right. So um, Eric just stepped away. I think um, I just want to make sure I handle this correctly. We, do we need to take a a roll call to go into executive session?
Yes, and I think we have to just make sure we invite um Tara and uh uh Jen and um Rhonda to stay um just for that budget review.
Yep.
Eric, Eric had said he had to step away. Um, he has a step away. He'd be joining us in about ten minutes.
Okay. Um so we are going to do that. Cindy, are you? Bye, Jordan. Uh, see you in six. Bye, Stephanie. So we're gonna move into executive session. Uh, Cindy Brule.
Here. Yes.
And Laura Wood, I'm here, I think. Uh yes, Jen, what am I doing?
We need to stop the recording.
Right.
And we need to kick Mary off.
Mary, Jerome, are you around? Tara's helping.
Okay, we're all set. Recording's back on.
We need to take another roll call now that we're back into our regular. I mean, can we just, we all know that, right?
Yeah, no, you already voted. You, you did the roll call to come back in, so you're all set to start.
Okay, so we are um going to move our discussion of the budget to Tuesday, February sixteenth at five o'clock. It'll be discussed then. And we are just looking to um get a motion to approve um an increase in Tara's salary for her new three-year contract, which will start in July? Is it July first? Um, Tara is looking for a three percent raise for that contract. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a three percent raise for Principal Barnes uh as part of her three-year contract starting on July first, two thousand twenty-one.
My second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Tara. I think um, we appreciate you and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, school committee.
Um, we are going to adjourn this meeting now at five thirty and give everyone a little bit of a break unless I see anyone's hand go up with anything else they want to say. And we'll reconvene at six o'clock. And we'll reconvene at six o'clock and I will hopefully get into the right meeting that time. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.